It's February 24th, 10 o'clock. We're gonna call this meeting to order roll call. Smiley, Eric, Hamel.
Here.
McMurphy, here. Uh, number four, approval of payroll warrants and claims.
So.
Charlie, do I need to sign this?
A second, David.
Yeah.
Yes, second, I'm sorry.
Everybody in favor?
I guess I've got a note on there, just right up there.
Okay, approval of the minutes of last meeting, February 14th, 2022. Any additions or corrections you saw, John?
It looked fine to me, I'll make it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Number six, discussion possible action regarding Farm Bureau. We got a proclamation here from them, and I'll read that, try to be quick. Whereas Woods County Farm Bureau has a nonprofit general farm organization operating within the boundaries of Woods County of the state of Oklahoma, has served the farmers and ranchers of this great county since 1946. And whereas Woods County Farm Bureau, due its concern for both producers and consumers, helps to develop a basic understanding of the complex structure that puts food on the tables of all Americans in most of the world. And whereas Woods County Farm Bureau has dedicated itself and its members to maintaining agriculture as an honorable and respected profession, which has been the base for much of the economy prosperity in Woods County in the state of Oklahoma. Whereas more than 478 member families in Woods County are members of Woods County Farm Bureau. Now, therefore, I, Randy McMurphy, Commissioner of Woods County, do hereby proclaim that we, February 21st through 25th, 2022, have Farm Bureau Week in Woods County of the state of Oklahoma.
Here, here.
Thanks, you guys.
Done deal, I mean.
Do you mind if we take one snap? Marty and I, do you mind if we take one?
No, no, no.
You know.
There you go.
When they see you, they just have.
Last year, you had a good one.
Well, I know you're diabetic, and I told him, hell no, he wasn't bringing you anything.
You're diabetic.
No, sit down, just sit down. Put the cap back on, the glove.
Hey, look, he's looking, he's sitting behind your arm.
Yeah, okay, look right here, one, two, three. Amy, like, would we put you over here?
All right, that's a fake smile.
Let me be sure we got something. Yep.
Guys, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Now, I'm going back and work for the county. Go on, man. I'm gonna go back and deliver meals to all your shut-ins.
You take care of my salary, buddy.
Yeah.
I'm taking care of my salary.
She may get a lot for that. She, she, she sounded a lot more mad. Okay. Yes, you're good.
Guys, I said that.
This was.
Guys, take it easy. You know when I saw her the last time? I think one of them. She was trying to service her parents.
You guys didn't take that.
She didn't swear it up.
No idea.
She called the doctor about last week. Son of a gun. Well, I'm glad our insurance covered you guys. Thank you, everyone.
Say that.
Bye.
You need another copy?
Yeah.
That's a copy. Hmm, so where did I do that at?
Yeah.
You got your one.
Where did I do that at? Is that where I signed? Or Farm Bureau signs?
No, I think you signed there.
Okay.
On that one last year, didn't she sign that bottom one?
I mean, I don't understand why they even bother.
All I know is what she did last year.
Okay.
Just something going on, I mean.
Uh-huh.
They, they, they got the right directions, but they don't give us, they tell us he's a farmer out in the pasture.
There we go.
And we're out there in the pasture.
Sorry.
For the guy. And he's, you know, the cracker. He's a drill crew.
Oh, that's what the dude was.
I'm gonna get him. Broke his arm, callout fracture. Misted it up in a drill press. Guy out of the crusher.
Hmm.
Off the crusher.
I knew Dylan text me last year.
Just outside, he was a farmer in the field miles south, without stretching a mile west, he's not going there.
I saw.
What's wrong with telling us that it took a couple of craters?
I think it's in the coffee.
Look, everyone.
It's one recount.
I don't care.
Thing has a original.
They play games with people.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we did.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Thank you. You had. Okay, number seven, discussion possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn in conference room on May 13th and 14th, 2022 for the Alabama Police Department cars concert.
And.
And barbecue contest. I, wait a minute, I'm a little confused about the call.
Okay, so was I, so I called Ben and asked, I said, why are you gonna need the conference room? And he said, they need somewhere for the judges of the barbecue.
Oh, really?
To be away from the cook.
Right, I get it.
From the guys cooking.
Okay.
And I said, well, I would ask you guys if we could block that off where they can't go any further except for into the conference room. And.
Yeah.
That was fine with him, if we could do that.
Okay.
Where they're not.
Yeah.
Going on up.
I, I, I move you to.
Okay.
I'll second that. Well, I agree.
Aye, aye.
We're honest, I think, where'd you say?
Uh.
Ah, we're honest, I didn't know where'd you say. What were these?
Oh, two conferences. It's about the police.
Operator.
I think so.
Mm-hmm. I wish I had a contractor?
Oh.
That's what, really?
This, I paid this very wrong. Was that just the last payment or?
I have no idea, we just pay what's turned into us. So I don't know. If all the paper was there.
Number four, if we can find out. Yeah. No. Number eight, discussion possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from the local arts revolve fund payroll in the amount of $4,302.76.
I move you to. Second.
In favor? Aye. Okay, number nine, discussion possible action regarding the transfer of funds from D2 CVIR to the EPR fund payment in the amount of $10,000. I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 10, discussion possible action regarding annual hosting maintenance agreement between the county clerk and Tyler Technology in the amount of $1,323.
Now, this is just normal, every year we do that maintenance.
I'll make the motion to D2. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 11, discussion possible action regarding the mobile annual subscription. That, I think that's what they call mo-laps, in the amount of $1,584 for this share.
So.
Thank you.
Favor?
Aye.
Number 12, discussion plus possible action regarding fiscal year 21 EMPG special project training grant application for Woods County. If you're up here.
Got several of these.
Couple of these.
Um, so basically, State Merit Amendment, they've changed up some of their funding stuff with some of our funding they got in. They first have this, like, this.
Okay.
So that training application, or application for the training grant, uh, is to reimburse for, um, the hotel for the annual conference.
Okay.
So, that's all about this for, and it's for, um, any additional money can be used for other trainings throughout the year. So, as for eight hundred dollars, I don't know, there's no, those can all share.
Okay, well, we got a motion to approve that.
I make the motion to D2. I'll second that.
Favor?
Aye.
I just reimbursed after, like, the hotel rooms and stuff.
We'll go, we'll just go ahead and go down to the room. We all, we all need to sign, or there's a couple spots here for signing, but everybody, that's the problem. All right, number 13, discussion possible action regarding fiscal year 21 EMPG special project generator grant application for Woods County.
Okay, uh, along the same lines, but this one, uh, is for generator light plant, uh, or a water pump. Uh, it's for a $20,000 grant, but it's $10,000. It's a 50-50 cost share only. So it's $10,000 federal money. Um, so it's buying, you have to buy new equipment, and it's for, for one piece, I don't think.
All right.
I move you to D2.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 14, discussion possible action regarding fiscal year EMPG special project water grant application for Woods County.
This one is for the amount of $1,000. Uh, there's no local cost share on it. Uh, and it's for, uh, a maximum of three gallons of water to keep on storage, so it's available.
Oh, really? Very good. I think that's good, all.
It's up to maintain it for a period of three years.
Almost there, okay. We need to set it.
Yeah, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 15, discussion possible action regarding fiscal year 21 EMPG special project water buffalo grant application for Woods County.
This water buffalo, it's, it's actually a portable water trailer, they call them the water buffalo.
Okay.
Um, and it's for, it's for a 50-50 match, and it's for $3,000 with the federal matches. Okay? And it follows the same lines where it's all new equipment.
Just, how big is?
It's, they'll provide up to 3, 3,000, so.
Oh, okay.
You can buy whatever, but the max that they're gonna give you.
Well, you just take it.
Yeah. They work from 500 up, you know, for the water.
I make the motion to D2. Second.
All in favor?
Yeah. Oh, it's, there's only a few spots that you have to sign, so it's a very.
Yeah.
The last page is everyone's.
Get you some papers, let's pull that out.
That's one of them, that'd be all right.
Oh, my.
Just this one, dude?
Yeah.
That's good.
One more.
Oh, they'll work.
Turn this side all the way.
Yeah. They, uh, I can't.
That's all I need you all to sign?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, there are four of them, isn't there?
You'd be getting all your places yours, that's why.
Yeah, yes, yeah, I just put, I just put that last page in.
Are these grants still adored in Sifa?
Yes. It's all, it's all going through that, uh, EMPG grant though, group, so it'll just go along.
Okay, very good. Will you make me a copy of those?
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that? Hey, so hang out. Okay, get this. Uh, discussion, number 16, discussion possible action regarding the Backroad Acres subdivision flat.
So, this is, um.
Gary Deach still?
No.
No.
This is that deal out there northwest of me, it's up there.
Yeah, it's out.
Up there. Oh, a acre.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So this guy has, like, it's just a little less than 160 acres. Um, he has already got it all plotted out, um, you can mark in the lots and everything, and he wants to call it Backroad Acres. He's got everything on the, he's got, he's got his taxes paid up with the treasure, uh, he's done everything he needs to do as far as we know.
Okay, that's what I, I didn't.
Yeah, we made, yeah, we made sure everything had gotten done.
I could need it, because I can't remember all the particulars. Yeah. You got through it.
Who is the individual, do you know?
His name is Jeremy. Do you remember that?
Oh, no, that's all right.
He's from, like, um.
He bought 160 acres, though.
Maryland, or somewhere.
He just went in on that 160 acres.
Broke it up in a cell lot, some stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they're like, um, anywhere from, you know, they're close to eight, most of them are acres. Yeah.
It's up there, you go up the corridor, gone, across them two, those two bridges up there to Jefferson, and go.
With the payment?
Yeah, on the payment, and then turn and go a mile and a half, no. Yeah, a mile and a half back west.
Yeah, west.
It was, yeah.
We should place Woods there.
Well, it used to be Bud's first. Terry Hall sold this deal.
Right, okay, I know.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not sure if this was the original buyer from Terry Hall, or it's somebody else.
Okay.
I, I don't, I didn't know the original buyer. I just knew the name, and I'm, I mean, I'm unclear.
He's.
So.
Yeah, Maryland, I'm sure it's Maryland.
Place. Yeah, the quarter west.
A lot of people.
Yeah, I know, I know.
The quarter west of it is where it is, and it's, just across the road from the White Horse Cemetery, a little back west.
So, guys, we need to, there's four copies, and I'll need all of them for inside.
Just one place.
Yeah, I need it.
We need, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Prove that.
All in favor?
Backroad Acres.
Backroad Acres.
Turkey fruit.
That was a reason for.
Name the roads, yeah.
Yeah, it, he had called.
How many, how many roads do you got, pick up there?
I don't have, they didn't pick that.
Yeah.
But he, he's having, yeah, he's putting three roads in. Well, this one was a leash road, right?
Yeah, yes.
Well, he left, put down these two.
I don't know, he's putting in.
Um, this, this.
Then people live down in there and they become ours. Like, kind of the public road.
Well, we, we have to decide on that. We don't have to, you know, and they have to be built to our specs, and he has to build them originally and through for the public, and that's kind of gonna be their call and their ask later, you know?
Well, I don't get it.
Because that one is essentially what.
Life's strange, that, and you need to build three times to our specs.
Well, except you come up with this path. He's got that little deal right there back there. Oh, he has a deal that's, well, I think he's following what I'm saying, I hope.
He hasn't filed. He hasn't filed any easements, and I talked to him about that.
Hard to, if he has as little as an easement, would it be hard? I don't think there's, I don't know about the requirements, that's why I'm.
County road?
Yes, this is a county road, and this is a county.
So, corridor road, and this is a?
No, corridor road's over here.
Oh, on the west, yeah.
Yeah, go west, and.
And this is on the south side?
Uh, yeah, so the road, and then.
This jump.
Two, yes, that's Jefferson, and this is two, eighty, maybe. It ends, it goes just another half a mile south, and you can't go the highway.
Where west is the corridor road, is that?
A mile and a half.
A mile and a half.
A mile and a half to this point.
Yeah.
Two miles, two miles to this. But, it's pretty rough, I don't know, these roads, there's gotta be bridges.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's for rough.
Wow.
There's a lot of canyons.
Well, that's kind of why I was asking.
There's a sense that they open the door, but they have to go with the bridges. No, I'm not going to, that's what, I've been down this road before, and anything they do on there, we can, if we so choose, can take them, but they have to be public roads, but he has to, he, it's his cost to fix all of those, and have to be done to our standards before we ever have to accept it.
And recoup his losses when he sells these lots.
Yeah, but, but. Somewhere in here, there's a bridge here, and then a mile south, there's a bridge there.
Right.
So, I, I don't know what, unless it's this thing right here, and he's got roads on either side of the creek.
Well, it's just, it's that road and this road.
Oh, that's the only two roads, you have this sporadic road.
They're cutting all 40 acres?
See, here's where he lists the 40-foot roadway easement on that road, that abandoned old lease road, and this road here. Well, that's why I was saying, if there's no, if there's no official easement on these two properties here, I mean, I know it's not your problem, but.
Right.
I, I, I tried, I tried to stop him.
That's it. Yeah. That doesn't realize it's not an easement to get this property.
He's already, he's already, I'm already out, because he's only providing a, a 40-foot easement.
Yeah.
Yes, and I, yeah. I'm worried about a lot of, you know, those issues, and told him about those easements. He said that his surveyor told him that he didn't need to file anything on those easements, because it states right there. I said, well, I'm no lawyer, so I'm not gonna tell you anything else. I said, I'm just telling you, everybody else has always filed easements.
Lawyer, I watch a lot of that, too.
I just said that.
So, there are four maps here, I guess I'll do this.
That, I'm sorry. You need to sign the maps?
Well, you have, what this flash is, and all.
Yeah.
Sign a great big one.
That?
You sign a great big one.
If you want to.
I, yeah, I just wanted, I didn't know if there'd be any other things on this, so, you know, that's, that's really all I know about it. Because, well, I'm, you know, if you had to talk to me, I'd have told him he needed 66 easements if he ever wanted the county to maintain. Yeah. I mean, I guess that.
That was mentioned to him, too, that the roadways aren't as wide as part of the county, Dick's share. And he said, well, they won't have to take, they won't have to take.
My, my only concern to be able to do this is if people do buy that, I mean, we're gonna wanna map that, but we're not gonna be able to call it a count, you know, it's not gonna be an address off of this.
Be called that Backroad Acres.
Your turn.
I mean, it's something we might, it's something we might have to talk with the post office about doing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jefferson Road, whatever, and.
Let me check out some public.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's not technically an official road.
That was why I wanted you to stay, because I don't, I don't know about, I mean, as far as, we don't have a zoning committee in Woods County, and we don't, I'm not in favor of one, and so, as far as I'm concerned, he can do what he wants.
Yep.
Yeah. That's one of the reasons I'm not in favor.
Yeah.
All the same. Thanks.
For four of these?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Talk, love mine.
Yeah, wipe that.
That's all right.
Don't show them what's on, they'll catch it. Same thing on that, with the glove radio. You get it?
Yeah. It'll be interesting.
It is, it will.
Thank you.
Okay, you ready, everybody ready?
Got it.
All right, discussion possible action regarding the surplus in my words for D1, ID number 441-126, 441-127, 441-128, and for D2, ID number 441-129, 441-130, and 441-131.
I make the motion to D2.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye. Then, uh, John Dearall, John Dearmore?
Yeah, mine, or, yeah.
You and David both, I'm gonna sign it here and then.
Okay. Okay, number 18, discussion of possible a, action regarding the transfer of appropriations from Highway District 1, served to Highway District 1, personal services in the amount of $15,329.95, and District 2, served to District 2, personal services in the amount of $15,329.64.
I make that motion to D2.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All three.
Yeah.
No, you just leave it. Yeah, just that. Okay, number nineteen, discussion of possible action regarding the resolution to remove the sheriff's nineteen ninety-eight Ford Cruiser. I D number B three, three, nine point one oh, due to it being sold on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at the auction held at one thirty to Larry Case in the amount of sixteen hundred seventy-five dollars.
I'll move the usual, check that.
Okay, aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that the Larry Case I know?
Larry, it's Chase, Larry Chase.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, alright, let's read that. And that'd be the Larry Chase I know.
Yeah, that'd be the Larry Chase.
Yeah, it's a dog. We have lines, they have two major.
Oh, yeah.
Or black, or paper.
I think it's a really good car for my age.
Well, I asked him, what's good news? She's never been a fellow.
Did you sign that?
No, he hasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Any new business? Have I got any new business?
I, uh, I don't know, uh, I didn't look at our six month bid, but a crack ceiling and Mastickon. Was there any, anybody notice whether anybody bid for them?
It's always just been the C D or whatever, because we haven't been able to get anybody bid on it in the past.
What about old heads?
I mean, he, he does that.
Should I just call him on a single source deal and have him come do it, or do I have to go out for bids, or if it's not on the six month bid or anything, can I just hire him?
I don't think so. Do you?
Well, you can go out for bids.
If there's a.
I mean, I think you have to at least get a written votes from three or something, don't you?
I, that, I just didn't know how to do it with our C D and it sounds like they have a waiting list there and they're having problems with their equipment. But I got a lot of windmill money that I could spend on that kind of stuff and this is the time of year and. I just didn't know how to go about it. He told me he would do, was interested in it, but that was this summer.
Yeah.
But then they, does that go under that tub of sixty-one though, for roads and bridges?
Well, I, I think here is the deal, it's not a six month bid, it's never, it's never wrong to bid something.
So just have to go out for bids and.
Uh, that's, that's what, it'd be two weeks, but from the time you go out, so I don't think that's going to kill the deal.
No, no, I mean, I got nothing but time.
That's, that's what I'd do is I'd just go out for bids on what, uh, you know, list, here's how I'd tell you, list the roads you want to have done. And what he did for me, uh, when I had him do it before, he did it so much a pound of material.
That massive stuff.
Yeah, because they can't bid, he, he won't want to give a price depending on, you know, the power or something.
That's a long road.
Yeah.
Not on a.
Without you coming to inspect it all first and all that and, uh.
So basically, you need to go out for bids.
And, and in the bids, and, and this would cover your deal in the bids you could put when you needed it done by.
Okay, like.
Yeah, completion day.
First or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. You, you see where, he'll, he'll get it done before that because his chip ceiling.
Do I need to list my roads on the, on the bid or?
I would.
Yeah, yeah, so. Cause here, here is the deal and I don't know, and I think they changed the rules on that, but if you get over a certain amount, John, they're. Uh, they have to be bonded on one project, but if you have the roads listed as separately and if. You could call every road a different project, so you don't have to worry about that engineering scenario. I think they've upped that. It was fifty thousand.
So like five, ten to four, ten?
Yeah.
Is that list one road or is that from five, ten per mile for ten miles?
Oh, oh, four, ten, okay, okay. No, that'd be fine, is, but I think they have to, it used to be fifty thousand per project, but if you list those separately. But see, if you combined those, all your roads together in one. Yeah, you could go past that fifty thousand, but I think they've upped that amount, but still it'd be better to keep those projects, the roads separate on your bid.
So like, uh, Green Valley, let's say four seventy between Beckham and Cato.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know.
Forty seventy between Cato and Shelley Road or, yeah, each one of them.
And then you're definitely, what you want to fix, yeah.
Ten mile, there's ten, so basically fifteen projects out of fifteen miles.
About ten miles, if it's all in the same county road, that's one project.
Okay.
But when you, if it's just a mile between and then you skip or whatever.
Well, it's Green Valley and, and then Alley Blacktop. Basically five mile and ten mile.
Yeah, okay, well, you know, I just list them that way, but it, it's two projects, that's what you're going to have to do.
And really, uh, the Mastickon is, is just in there about three or four mile. I wasn't going to do anything on some of that.
Well, they listed for crack ceiling and Mastickon, two separate deals. I think you'll have two different prices anyway.
Yeah.
It, it needs to be a separate deal, crack seal deal and a, and a Mastickon deal.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Cold.
Okay, approved, disapproved, blanket purchase order.
I'll move the motion. So moved.
You all in favor? Uh, number twenty-two, motion to adjourn.
That's what I meant, so moved on. We're there, I second that.